If we are, if I could everyone take a seat, we'll go ahead and get started on the budget hearing. Thank you to all of our candidates and thank you for being here this evening. As mentioned by our district clerk or clerk of the district, it'd be Turner. Throughout this budget hearing, if you have questions, please feel free to come up to the podium here and ask. You can wait till the end, you can come up during the presentation if there's a specific question that relates to the area of focus that is on our screen. So I'm going to make sure that's turned on real quick so that you can ask a question. So one of the things I would like to point out before we get started was that the Board of Education, District Administration, worked very hard to put together this budget. We feel based on all of the information that you've heard this evening that it is focused on students. It's a priority in how we developed our budget. We worked collaboratively over the course of this past school year to really put a budget together that is ultimately, I believe, fiscally responsive to our taxpayers and focuses where we need to focus most, and that is on our students. And the graphic that you see represented here is what it's all about. You see our, some of our younger students, some of our championship athletes, our final performing arts students, and students engaged in learning, which is what we strive to do on a daily basis. Much of our work is centered on our district mission and vision, so as we build this budget, it is then prioritized on our strategic plan and making sure that we are educating, building, and empowering our students. And so we're very thankful for our community's support of our strategic plan. If you didn't participate in the Community Perception Survey that was done last school year, it was the driving force behind our priorities that you see here. This year, we focused on increasing school safety and security, exemplifying culturally responsiveness, diversity, and equity, and then providing project-based learning experiences for our students. Some of our board candidates mentioned all of the points of pride, so I'm not going to highlight them again. But what I will say is that we are proud, that bottom right-hand, that picture of our students at the expo center for graduation really highlights the culminating event of what we feel that we're doing for our students and our school community. And there's no greater day than every day, every year, when we are at our graduation ceremonies celebrating the successes of our students. This is what it's about. We have 5,490 students. They are represented in our elementary schools, our middle school, our junior high school. We have a few out-of-district placements where we're supporting students based on their needs, and just under 1,300 high school students. Our budget development process is a full-year process. We begin this work once the budget is approved by our voters every year. So in September, the Board establishes the budget calendar, and they adopt that calendar. And we work toward making sure that we are getting feedback from our administrators, our staff, from the community, to develop the budget that we have been presenting here this evening and that will be on the ballot on May 21st. We engage our community through community advisory committees, where each of our instructional leaders focuses on their portion of the budget, where community members are able to engage in conversation and have dialogue about the beginning, initial drafts that we present to the Board. New this year, working with the Board of Education, we were excited to have what we call the workshop model for budget presentations. And so in December and January, the Board engaged in conversation with the leadership team about the budget in a very detailed way. And what you have in front of you this evening and what you'll be voting for on May 21st is a culmination of that work. When you think about what goes into our budget development process, it really centers on making sure that we're aligning our work with our fund balance management plan, and then also taking into consideration where we stand with some of the federal funding that is ultimately going away in September of 2024. So this coming September, we are no longer going to have access to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which I will say that this district has been very thoughtful about how we utilize those resources. And so we are in a position unlike others where we're not having to lay off staff, we're not having to make major program changes because we're thoughtful on how we utilize that funding so that we can plan long-term to make sure that we're providing the highest quality of education for our students. This graphic represents the breakdown based on instructional area for our proposed $135 million budget. We're required by law to present the budget in three parts: the administrative, the program, and the capital components. So we're going to first start with the presentation of our program component. What we are most proud of is the fact that just under 79% of our budget is covered within the program component. So think about any connection to students, it falls within this program component. And so we're proud of that fact. This year alone represents a roughly $5 million increase over the current program budget, which is ultimately driving up that overall 78.65% of the overall budget. What you see is work that aligns to our strategic plan. Here are some examples of some of that work. So we talked about project-based learning, there's examples of that with our technology teachers. We've expanded our universal pre-K program, that top right-hand corner of one of our school resource officers and special patrol officer, working with one of our UPK students. Talk about extracurricular activities and opportunities around the scheme. You'll see our robotics and hands-on learning with students represented in the two other graphics. New York State requires us to make sure that we're in what we call a good standing academically based on student performance. They've changed the terminology and they're referring to schools now what was once considered in good standing to be under local support and improvement with the premise that ultimately we're always looking to improve, we're always looking to grow, which speaks to our focus this year about sustained solution focus. So I'm happy to report that all schools within our district are what we call LSI, or good-standing schools. There's some more graphics of our students in action, which is again what it is all about. If you put a plug in for our special champions event, that bottom right-hand corner there, where you see the students running with the Be a Champion shirt, Be a Champion shirt, we have our special champions event this coming Monday at our stadium during the school day. We would encourage anyone to come out and participate and to celebrate the successes of our students. Last year, or in this current school year's budget, we allocated a significant amount of resources to our final performing arts programs. We added the purchase of instruments so that we can ensure that every student had access to instruments at our beginning levels, grades three, four, and five. And so what you see here is the percent change based on enrollment in those programs. And the reason I wanted to highlight this this evening is because we know that there's data that exists across the state. When students are engaged in the final performing arts, they achieve economically. And we're very excited about the growth of our final performing arts program. And we're excited to see what happens with these students as they progress through our middle school, our junior high school, and our high school. And this budget does allow for us to continue that program. So our students that are leaving fifth grade this year, going on to middle school, will have instruments available for them as needed based on time limits. Here's a breakdown of our program component based on categories. You'll see significant changes mainly due to contractual obligations that we have for our students, for our teachers, for our staff. You'll also see an increase for students with disabilities, students labeled as having disabilities. Those are based on programming needs, based on individual IUPs, where we need to make sure that we're ensuring the proper supports for our students. I do believe that our Student Services Department is top-notch, and we have, we've heard from folks around the central New York community that folks are moving into our district because of the program that we offer here in this district. And so we're proud of our inclusive environment for students with disabilities. Again, as I mentioned, about a $5 million increase program budget from last year, from this current school year to next year. And I believe that represents about a 5.1% increase budget to budget. Moving on to the administrative budget, I'm excited to say that we actually have a reduction overall in the percentage of the budget administratively. So the percent of the total budget, we've seen a reduction administratively. The administrative budget supports all of the leadership within our buildings, within the district office, our Board of Education, our association dues. And what I would like to share, even though it's about a $250,000 increase over the current school year, represents about a 2.2% increase year over year, which I feel is reasonable. One other point that I would like to highlight is that we are required, based on the Every Student Succeed Act, or what we refer to as ASA, to complete a financial transparency report that gets submitted to the State Education Department. And this information is readily available to anybody, just go to the State Education Department's website. And what I think you're going to find is that this district, when compared to the other 23 component school districts, has one of the lowest administrative costs per student across the board. And so we're very happy to share that, that we feel we do a great job supporting students and supporting our staff and being responsive to our taxpayers. The capital component of our budget handles all of the work with our maintenance and operations, maintaining our facilities, our short-term and long-term debt. The major change that you see in this portion of our budget is centered on our debt service. And as you would expect with all of the capital work, the projects that our community has been so supportive of over the last few years, we're seeing that debt coming on, and we're having to support that debt. And employee benefits, employee benefits in this specific region centers on any benefits that tie to our facilities and maintenance group. This year also tied to capital, every year our Board is, and our community has the ability to see a smaller capital, what we call capital outlay project when we present our budget. This year, the $100,000 capital outlay is focused on Palmer Elementary School. It is the final school we've been working through over the last few years and allocating those resources to all of our elementary schools. And Palmer is the last stop. If you think about it, $100,000 doesn't go a long way. But what we want to point out here is the fact that for every dollar we spend, we get 88 cents back on it. So in theory, based on our skating ratio, we are basically only heading to cover through local taxpayers $12,000 of this $100,000 worth of work. So that is definitely a benefit for our district and our students. This chart represents the overall percent change. And as I highlighted earlier, where you see significant change and increase in our budget is focused on students, it's that program component. You see the two percentages that I mentioned regarding the capital and the administrative budget. So overall, we see a budget to budget increase of 4.56%. And I'll talk a little bit later about the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, it's at 4.1% when we were developing this budget. So pretty much in line with what you're, everyone's experiencing with the cost of things going up at home. When it comes to our estimated revenues, this chart represents where we receive our revenues in order to balance our budget. And so our overall budget, the revenue portion, is made up of 45% state aid and 49% is made up of local taxes. And so where we've seen an increase in this estimated state aid, it says including VOSEs there, from $53 million to $55 million in this proposed budget, it is not because the legislature or the government, the governor chose to give us more state aid or foundation aid. Our foundation aid is flat this year. Where we were able to pick up additional state aid is through expense-driven aids. That means if we use a service, we get aid back on that service. So we have really worked hard over the last year to make sure that we're maximizing our use of expense-driven aids so that we can offset the local share with that work. The estimated tax rate increase is just at 3.89%, that is at the tax cap. We are, as I mentioned, that budget to budget increase of 4.56 and Consumer Price Index paying 4.1. I'm highlighting the fact that it is an estimated tax rate because what we know over the last few years is that based on growth in our school community, we know that the estimated tax rate, what we go out with our public for the vote, and what it actually ends up being are two different percentages. And so you'll see last year alone, we went out with an estimated tax rate of 2.85%. And when everything was all said and done, we ended up at a negative 7.4%. So that's why you're seeing the true tax rate per thousand, the true value going down over this multi-year period. And what I want to point out is that last year was a good indication for us of how much growth is really in the school community because there was no reassessment within the towns of Lysander and Inberon and Clay last year. And we know that that growth was at $40 million. So whether it be new homes being built and/or in business moving into the area. What that will look like this year, we set these rates when we finalized the warrants in August. So nothing's finalized until that is done in August, once we receive those values. We are anticipating additional growth again this year, as we've had in years past. And I have been told through conversations with the town of Lysander and the town of Inberon, which makes sense because I don't think anybody's received any requests for, or notifications of reassessments. They're not reassessing this year either. So that'll give us another good indication of how much growth, knowing that home values are not changing in this budget cycle. That being said, just a disclaimer, if you have any work done on your home, like you're putting in a new pool, or you're having an addition added to your house, those are the only homes, from my understanding and working with them, that will have some adjustments, which makes sense. There's a graphic of our tax rate per thousand, which again, for those that are visual, gives you a better indication of what that looks like over time. And then there's the historical tax rate graphic of where we have projected, based on the data we have, at the time that the Board approves the budget. And you vote to where the actual is when you take into consideration all the expanded growth within our school community. So what happens if the budget is not approved? The Board of Education has three options: they can put the same budget up to four voters, they can reduce that budget and ask voters to approve the reduced budget, or they can go directly to a contingent budget. If we happen to have to go to a contingent budget, it would require us to reduce the budget as it stands right now by $2.46 million. We are not able to purchase equipment, that is prohibited on a contingent budget. And then we are also not able to have our school community utilize our facilities when schools are not in session. So it's important, I hope that that's not the case. Our community has been very great supportive in the past, and we're hopeful for that moving forward. Our second proposition is for the purchase of 14 internal combustion school transportation vehicles, or school buses. These are 14 diesel buses, not to exceed $2.6 million. And this allows us to continue with our bus replacement plan. That bus replacement plan, we have well over 125 buses. And we think about how long these buses last, maybe at most, over ten years, 11 years. We need to continue with our replacement plan in order to maintain the fleet that we have. We're excited about the fact that we have great DOT inspection rates due to the talented staff that we have here in the facilities and mechanics in our transportation center. So we're asking voters to help continue to support like they've done in other years, the purchase of those 14 internal combustion vehicles. It makes sense for us to do that because if you take a look at this slide, the percentage of cost to the district is on the fact that we get 81% aid on the purchase of our vehicles. We're spending over the course of five years for these 14 vehicles, just under $100,000. And when you put that into perspective of your own vehicle, and I like to, I was a former math teacher, so I like to throw out numbers, when you think about that cost per bus, that represents $7,000 per bus over that five-year period. And when you think about, what does that mean to a personal car payment? $7,000 a year for five years, it means a car payment of about $583 a month. So when you think about the types of vehicles that we're getting, the cost, the size, what they're used for on a regular basis, it makes sense because of the aid that we're getting to do this purchase. This third proposition that we have before voters this year is for one zero emission student transportation vehicle. And this is to help us start to move forward based on the information that we have from our legislature, our government officials, knowing that by 2035, all of our vehicles have to be zero emissions. And by 2027, we have to only purchase zero emissions vehicles. Now that's, that could change, we know that. But we feel it's important to put this out there so that our mechanics and our bus drivers can start to get familiar with working, driving, and utilizing a zero emissions vehicle. And by zero emissions vehicle, it could be electric, it could be hydrogen fuel. So we've left it broad so that we have flexibility over the course of this calendar year. You'll see they're quite expensive, but given the fact that we have some grants available that we've received, it really reduces that cost. So what I'm asking voters to do here is to, like I've shared in videos, vote with your heart, right? We know that electric vehicles, some people are for electric vehicles, others are not. So we want you to vote as you see fit. We can benefit from having the zero emissions vehicle, like I said, it gives our folks the ability to work with it, to get comfortable. It's a lot different than working on an internal combustion vehicle. And if we don't have this proposition find success, that's also good data that we can share with our legislators and our governor to say, maybe we need to slow down this timeline. Because again, we have a lot of vehicles that we will have to replace over the course of the next decade. This comparison gives you an idea of how much an internal combustion vehicle costs, just under $175,000, and then a zero emissions vehicle being $575,000. Proposition four is for our Board of Education candidates, who you heard from earlier this evening. And what I'd like to end my time with you this evening is that this really is all about students. It's about creating opportunities, it's about celebrating their successes. And I do believe that the Board of Education, in collaboration with our district staff, have put together a budget that we feel is going to allow us to continue to do all the great things that we do here in Bolonsville. And so with that, I'll end with Go Bees and welcome any questions if you have questions about the budget. If you don't mind coming up to the microphone so that we can...
It's a really quick question, so I'm okay. I just, is this zero emission vehicle, is that a bus? What kind of vehicle?
It is a bus, it's a full-size passenger bus, it's just electric, yes.
Yeah, no, that was just like a quick question.
Other questions?
Hi.
Hi.
So with these 14 new ICE buses, what percentage of the fleet will we be at?
I can't do that math with my head, but about 14, just like saying about 14%, 10%.
Well, that's it?
That's it, yeah.
When did we stop replacing them?
We've always, we're on a 10-year replenishment process. So every year, you see 14 buses, 12 buses on the ballot.
Yeah. And then we have to replace the entire fleet by 2030?
By 2035, the entire fleet, as it stands right now, has to be zero emissions.
Okay.
Other questions? Come on up, sir.
First off, thank you for the hard work that you and the administration does in the whole system. I am proud to be a resident of the school. Now, a couple zitty gritty questions on that proposition one. The last couple of years, I think, I know the last year anyway, your full-size buses have gone to gasoline, not diesel. Are you going back to diesel?
We are. Actually, the manufacturer is no longer manufacturing the gasoline vehicles, so that's why you see the shift to diesel. At one point, we had a complete diesel fleet, and then we changed to the gasoline, and now we're resorting back to diesel because that's all we're able to get based on the engines. My understanding is they're moving more from the commercial end, focusing on commercial because they're zeroing in their efforts on diesel and then the zero emissions or electric buses. So we have no choice, we can't get a gasoline bus based on the vendor that we utilize.
Okay, one more question on that. If you take that 2.6 billion and you divide it by 14 vehicles, it comes out to $187,000 approximately a piece, but they're not all the same. You've got full-size buses, you've got mid-size buses, you've got vans.
We do not have vans in this proposition, these are all larger vehicles. My understanding though, and I looked at Tiffany because she's the numbers person, some of it though, based on the type, if it needed to transport a student label that's having a disability, it might need a lift. So some of these buses have lifts, which is an added cost. So on average, you're looking at the cost of a large school bus being about $175,000. So that's why you see a little fluctuation, but they're not little buses anymore. We purchased the big chassis buses.
So just another comment, that New York State aids the buses over five years. Unfortunately, districts are forced to finance for school buses in order to receive the aid over five years and pay on the bond so that the aid matches the bond payments. So also included in that proposition are the financing costs for the vehicles.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, and I will encourage you to vote on, to... If there are no further questions, then I will encourage you to vote on Tuesday, May 21st, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at our District Operations Building, right on our main campus, off from Albert Palmer Lane. And close with just saying thank you for your continued support of our students, we appreciate it. If you have questions that you didn't feel comfortable asking, we'll hang around here, have a great evening.